And call to order this regular session of the City of Leavenworth Planning Commission meeting. We do have a quorum. Commissioners have received copies of the minutes from the March meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to be made to the minutes?
No.
Okay, if not, we'll take a motion at this time to approve the minutes as provided.
I motion to approve the minutes from Monday, March 12.
Thank you, commutant. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We have one old business item, which is to discuss the proposed meeting change from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Yep, this was discussed briefly at the last meeting. Kamala had approached staff about the possibility of moving the meeting time up to 6:00, and so we just wanted to give all the commissioners a chance to discuss and see if that's something that you wanted to do. If not, we can certainly keep it at 7:00, just up for discussion and kind of on your plate.
What was the rationale, Kamala?
Well, several different things, especially for the applicants. You know, most of them are business owners or around this area, or even if they're from Kansas City, you know, they usually get off around 5-ish anyway, and 6:00 might be a better time for them, instead of, you know, waiting around a couple hours. I know personally, for me, which is nor here nor there, I mean, I prefer 6:00. I mean, I get up at 4:00 in the morning, but that's, you know, I'd still be here at 7:00, which I am tonight.
I don't think 7:00 or 6:00 makes a difference for me. Anyone else?
I mean, does 6:00 work for everybody?
Yeah.
Is this something that, does this work for the staff as well?
Yeah, yeah, we're here regardless, so.
They live here.
Do you think public would care less?
I don't think that there would be an issue. It's after business hours. Other cities have planning commission meetings at all times throughout the day, from like 1:30 in the afternoon up through, you know, 7:00.
Yeah, similar, like, yeah, 9:00 in the morning, too.
Yeah, so it shouldn't make too much of a difference, and with it, 6:00 still being after normal business hours, I wouldn't see that really impacting any citizens that would want to come and participate.
If we do want to make a change, is this our decision, or does it have to go to the city commission?
Nope, it's your decision. I checked with the city clerk on that. It's just, you would make, you would have consensus to make the change, and then going forward, we would just proceed at 6:00.
Is the meeting date and time specified in the bylaws? Would we have to amend the bylaws?
Yeah, it's in the bylaws, so we would amend that, but it's nothing that requires city commission to pass a resolution or anything.
Okay.
If we made that change, would it, could it, do we need to make it maybe effective in August instead of July, sooner, or is there any need to delay a month if we chose to go July?
Do we have anything for July? We don't have anything for the July meeting, and I think our deadline's already passed, have it there.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so we will have something for August, but we won't have anything in July.
Okay.
And we would, you know, certainly put something on the city's webpage and out on Facebook, just to make sure that that got out there for people.
Right, that gives people time then, to see the change that was to happen.
Any other views on this? Is it fair to say we have a consensus that we would agree to changing the meeting start time to 6:00, starting in August?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a motion on that, or is it?
No, just consensus, you don't need a motion for.
I think if you could carry that forward for us, it appears to be our consensus.
Yep, we'll do so.
Thank you.
And we'll remind everybody when we send out the next agenda packet that's 6:00.
For those who haven't been doing it for a while.
Well, probably just be Kamala being here, but that's okay. We have a, our new business item is rezoning request 2018-16, which is 110 North Second Street. Have the staff report, please.
Yes, this is a request to rezone the property at 1100 North Second Street from planned unit development, PUD, to residential mixed-use district, which is RMX. Property is commonly known as the Abernathy Furniture Company factory, was constructed in 1926, and it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It was listed in 2016. The request is being made in order to convert the structure into apartment units. There would be a total of 139 single-bedroom apartment units, and there is existing onsite parking over what would be required. It's got 220 spaces available onsite, which does exceed what's required. The RMX zoning district is intended to provide for high-density multifamily dwelling units along with appropriate neighborhood and office-type uses. There is no requirement that there be any certain ratio of commercial versus residential units, so this is just really flexible zoning district that can allow really any mix of residential or commercial to be present onsite. And the feeling was that this would give the owner the flexibility to have the residential at this point, with the commercial and office uses sort of consolidated in one portion of the building, and then if conditions were to change in the future, they would have the flexibility to sort of change things around to accommodate any changing factors that they may encounter. The location is part of the redevelopment overlay district, which is, covers downtown and northeast Leavenworth. That was put into place in 2010. This particular location is part of the North Gateway Business and Innovation Campus, and the intent of that subarea was to generate new business and employment opportunities and a high-quality experience and image for Leavenworth's northeast entrance to downtown. Since that plan was put into place in 2010, economic conditions have changed pretty drastically, as you're all aware, so the building remaining a 100% office or commercial space has just really not panned out. The staff report is a little bit incorrect. It's not completely vacant. There are a couple of office users left, pretty minimal, but I'm sure all of you remember when it was completely full with contractors, I think mostly military contractors, and that market has really just evaporated for now, and so it's the feeling that residential is a good use for this building, get this historic building back into use and have it, you know, fully occupied again. So the Development Review Committee did review this application at their April 26th meeting, and there were no major items of concern. The Leavenworth Preservation Commission is set to hear this item on this Wednesday. They do have to consider this, since it is a nationally registered historic landmark. So the conditions of determination, I will just go through those quickly. The first one, the character of the neighborhood, as I said, this is part of the downtown Leavenworth and the redevelopment overlay district, and there are a variety of uses and building forms, and historic structures are common in the area. Second is the zoning and use of properties nearby. Properties to the north and east are zoned light industrial, property to the south is zoned multifamily, and the properties to the west is zoned planned unit development. Third one is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. As I said, it's currently zoned planned unit development, which limits the structure to office-related uses that were in place at the time of the previous zoning. PUD zoning district is really intended to allow sort of more creative planning, to allow things that wouldn't necessarily fit well within a zoning district that's already established. This was zoned in the mid-'80s, and so at that time, there just weren't the zoning districts in place to really accommodate what was going on with the site at the time, and we found that with a lot of different spots in town. They were given a PUD zoning district because we didn't really have the districts to cover what was being proposed, and now we do, and so it's staff's feeling that it's better to get it back into an actual zoning district that we've got established, that we've got set parameters and guidelines for what can and cannot go on in that district. The next condition is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed zoning should have little to no detrimental effect on nearby property. Again, there is a mix of uses in the downtown area, and there are a number of multifamily uses in the downtown and this northeast part. The next is the length of time the subject property has remained vacant and zoned. Again, I apologize for the report being incorrect, it is not vacant. The building is mostly vacant, but there are a couple of office users still in there, and they will be staying with the property. The next is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. The proposed zoning will have a positive effect on the economic conditions of downtown Leavenworth by providing for a number of new residential opportunities, bringing more people into downtown, increasing, you know, that tax base and getting folks to shop and spend their money in Leavenworth. The next is staff recommendation of permanent unprofessional staff. Staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan being utilized. The area is identified as appropriate for commercial uses in the comprehensive plan. However, the bulk of downtown is identified in the comp plan as appropriate for commercial uses. It's nothing in the comprehensive plan is called out as mixed use. So given that, and that there already exists a lot of mixed uses in the downtown area, and we've got a lot of residential uses in this downtown and northeast area, and since it is, again, part of the northeast Leavenworth redevelopment area plan, staff does feel like that there is not really conflict with the overall intent of the comprehensive plan, given how the rest of downtown has been identified as such. And then the final is any other factors that may be relevant to the particular proposed amendment. The factors considered in taking action on any proposed amendment shall be included in the minutes, and just we would note that the proposal does make possible the adaptive reuse of a previously mostly vacant historic structure. So again, you know, bringing new life and vitality to a historic property that exists in the town right at the entrance as people are coming across Centennial Bridge from the east. So the possible actions are to recommend approval of the rezoning request, recommend denial of the rezoning request, or table the issue for additional information or consideration. So I can answer any questions you might have, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for Ms. Hurley on the staff report?
I just had a couple for clarifications to understand. With the Preservation Commission meeting June 6th, what is the nature of their meeting? What does that, what are they going to do?
The city is required by statute, since we're a certified local government designated by the state, any proposed change to a nationally registered property has to be reviewed by the Preservation Commission. So they're really reviewing it out of the requirement of that statute.
This still stays as a historical registered property, part of some of its adaptive reuse, but?
Yeah.
Okay.
And since they are, I believe they're proposing to use some tax credits for this property, and so the state historic office will be actually reviewing this as well, so it's got a number of levels of review on it.
Good, thank you.
And in line with that, Julie, are they going to be asking Historic Preservation Commission anything about any physical changes to the building going on? Are they going to change anything on the exterior?
Sure, there are really just real minimal changes, just mainly maintenance, things that would need to be updated. The most notable change is there's an existing smokestack, sort of on the north end of the building, that you're probably familiar with. That's going to be shortened because it's structurally deficient and it's just not safe, and so they want to retain that feature, but in order to make it safe, they have to lower it a little bit, but that's really the only, or the most significant change that's taking place. And then Chairman Byrne did email me and ask a question, so I would just bring it up. The question about, there are a couple of billboards on top of this, and since this is changing the use of the building, the question came up whether or not that would constitute a change in use that would necessitate the removal of those billboards. It does not, the regulations consider billboards separately, and so on a business, just a building that had a business sign up on it, if it changed use, that sign would have to be removed. Billboards are considered differently, and so unless the billboard falls into disrepair or becomes vacant, it can remain. So those billboards that are there currently will be able to remain, should the new owner choose to continue that lease.
Julie, elaborate a little more. You'd mentioned changing the zoning from a PUD is going to help the city with some controls and guidelines that the rezoning will assist. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, when a property is rezoned to PUD, really, since there's no set established zoning district, when that rezoning comes through, really, you need to set those guidelines for the specific property. So that would be like setbacks, usage, what type of signage is allowed, design guidelines, anything like that. When this was rezoned in the mid-1980s, that wasn't really done too extensively, and so what we run into a lot of times with these PUD zoning districts that were done 20 or 30 years ago, is we come up to them and we really have no guidelines on how to look at appropriate uses or appropriate, you know, building design or site design, anything like that. So getting this zoned to an established zoning district, the regulations are very clear in uses that are allowed, setbacks, you know, design, all of that. So that'll be more clear for staff to work with, and then going forward in the future as well.
So in line with that, with that thought, then, even if the, let's hypothetically say Historic Preservation Commission doesn't approve this on Wednesday, would it still be beneficial to the city to have this as a RMX zoning as opposed to keeping it to the PUD?
Yep, because that would still then allow for the applicant to possibly modify their proposal and take it back to the Preservation Commission, or if they were to sell it to another user, we'd still have some parameters, some definite parameters to look at and evaluate in a new proposal.
Couldn't he amend the planned unit development plan?
That's one possibility, and again, with the PUDs especially that were done some time ago, this one in particular has been amended over a dozen times, and so as they're amended multiple times, they start to get a little bit messy and a lot more unclear as to what's actually allowed and intended with the zoning district, so that's always a possibility. And talking with the applicant, staff did recommend that we just go ahead and rezone and sort of get a clean slate. Everybody's on the same page, and then going forward, we've got, you know, those defined regulations.
This is another 139 units, the already stove loss and other conversion of buildings downtown to apartments, but since they're all single bedrooms, I assume they're focusing on soldiers on the fort.
I believe so, and the applicant could talk a little bit more about their target demographic.
It could be.
You may even get people, though, from over Missouri, though, that want to, you know, live here and work in Missouri, too.
That's true, yeah.
Any other questions on the staff report?
The Development Review Committee meeting identified two issues that I see. So one was the ninth bullet that talked about the flooding issues. Can we determine who's responsible for that? Because in here, it leaves it kind of open as to the State Highway Department.
Yeah, I don't think that that's been specifically addressed. Something like that, we would expect it, when it comes in for building permit, to be addressed, and I know that the applicant, they have submitted plans for permit just to get reviewed. We'll allow applicants to do that, go ahead and get them in to be reviewed before an approval has gone through. We want to issue any permits, but we can kind of get them in the queue and start getting some comments back, so he can let us know if that's been addressed. Since they're not really changing the site, they're not adding any more pavement, it's not something that technically has to be addressed. It was more just of a sort of informational for the applicant, like, hey, there has been some flooding, and so you're probably going to want to look into that.
And then the next bullet was attention to water quality issues. What was that specifically? Is that?
And that's, again, kind of a standard statement from our Public Works, and again, since they're not adding any impervious surface, that's not something that technically has to be addressed. We always suggest that applicants take a look at it, and if there's some simple measures that they could take, that's always, you know, beneficial, but since they're not adding a new construction or new parking areas, then there's no requirements there.
Thank you.
And for these 139 single-bedroom units, what type of security are you going to have for the renters?
Jonathan Clark, and I'll let you come up to the microphone.
Hello.
Hi.
Security, we're going to have.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I am John Clark. I work for Fauch Brothers, the owner of the property. Yeah, so security-wise, we'll have controlled access at each entry. Tenants will have a security card, and so.
So probably one, they'll probably all enter like a main entrance and then have, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the commercial and residential will be split.
Okay.
Separate entrances, they'll have separate card access.
Is there, for the apartment owners, is there any amenities that you're going to have for them, or is it just apartments?
Yeah, so there will be that, I guess, the center building, you see, it's the lowest one yet where the arrow is pointing, that's in more recent addition that we're going to tear down, keep the steel structure, open it back up to an outdoor courtyard, and then there will be a small addition to the west side of that courtyard that will be kind of a fitness group, community area.
What is the range on the cost for each apartment? Do you, or is that something that's still up in the air?
Yeah, it's still up in the air. I don't deal much with that with the ownership portion of it, so.
Okay. Are they going to be leased or purchased?
They will be leased apartments, yeah.
And then, if I'm understanding this correctly, I did drive by, is there like a little balcony to the east of that that kind of overlooks the river?
Yes.
So what is that going to become?
That will be, it will become two outdoor balconies for apartments.
For like, just a common area?
It will be.
For actual apartments?
Private, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Separate access from the apartment out there.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, there will be a couple other small amenities. There's going to be a bike storage station, I guess, storage compartments in the units, and then a public kitchen and kind of coffee hangout area, too, so.
Okay. When everything goes through approval, what's your target date to have it completed, hopefully?
12 months. Probably see a phase completion, but 12 to 14 months. We're going to try and target beginning of June for some of the military folks that are getting done with.
With their school?
Yeah.
I'm sorry if I missed it, because I know you have plenty of parking space available there. Like with a lot of places, are there any future plans that you have to offer covered parking and enhance that in the future?
Yes, there will be 40 covered parking spots onsite.
Okay, thank you.
So my fellow commissioner had talked about other areas in town. It seems like a lot of older buildings or structures are wanting to rent these one-bedroom facilities. Is there a plan in place if they don't all rent out? I mean, are you feeling pretty confident or your company that they will? Because I've seen a lot of proposals go through in the last year for new facilities that are one-bedroom, so that's concerning.
Yeah, again, I haven't been a big part of those conversations, but they have done their market studies and have determined that there is a need and shouldn't have any issues.
Are you going to be at the meeting on Wednesday?
Yes, I will.
Can you bring some of those market studies? Are you able to? Because I'll be at that meeting.
Yeah, I can reach out and see.
Okay.
Or if there's anything that you can send me ahead of time, like if there's a summary or something that they have, and I can get that distributed. And send it to the county commissioners as well, just so you can see that information.
Thank you, Julie.
Any other questions for Mr. Clark? Thank you, sir. This is a zoning request, a rezoning request, so it will be a public hearing, so we'll open a public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak for or against the proposed rezoning?
Did we get any feedback from your mailing?
We did not. We provided notification, and we had no response from anybody.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion regarding the rezoning request from the commissioners?
Just one thought that I have, Mr. Commissioner, is on changing the zoning, I'm not as concerned about whether it's a one-bedroom, or two-bedroom, or three-bedroom, as long as they're meeting all the development requirements and parking requirements, because I think that this, if we elect to move forward with this change in zoning, it allows some flexibility. If the market says, hey, we need two-bedroom apartments now, they have the flexibility to do that on their own without coming back to us or anybody, so.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the single-bedroom units. I have two friends at church that are looking for small apartments, but they want to have two bedrooms, simply to be able to reduce their responsibilities, you know, having to take care of a home and a single home and stuff like that, and they haven't been able to find anything that's suitable. Now, it concerns me that we're focusing on singles instead of opening it up into a wider market.
Anything else?
Another topic for discussion is, is it possible that we could, if we choose to move forward with approving this, that we could do with a condition based on Wednesday's outcome of the planning of the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, because this won't go to city commission until the second meeting in June, so towards the end of the month, to the city commission, so, yeah, there could certainly be a condition based on approval, I assume, of the Preservation Commission.
Because I'm just thinking it'd be, would it, I don't know if it necessarily hurt us or hurt the applicant if we approve it now and then find out that Historic Preservation Commission doesn't approve it, you know, if it's kind of a cart in front of the horse thing.
So you could make it a condition that a recommendation for approval would be contention upon approval from the Preservation Commission, and that would have been resolved prior to going to the city commission, so we'll have that answered fairly quick.
Yeah, I guess just a thought, I mean, 139 single-bedroom units, it's a lot. I mean, maybe they could take 15 of them, make them two-bedroom, or something like that, so, who knows? Just ponder.
Yeah, I could interrupt. There are, I can give you an exact number, but there, 10% of them are two-bedroom.
Are they some two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, then we're parking up a tree.
So I apologize for that one.
They, yeah, we just had one bedroom.
And it may have changed since the first one.
Okay.
Good to know.
Yeah, 45 are two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom.
One bath, two-bed, two-bath.
Okay.
Thank you.
But they're primarily one.
Well, there we go.
What date would this go to the commission, the city commission? Do you have an idea?
Do you have your camera? I want to say it's the 26th, whatever that Tuesday would be.
26th.
Yeah, the 26th of June.
That's a daytime meeting.
They're at 7:00 in the evening.
At 7:00?
Yeah.
Any other discussion from the commissioners?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and take a motion. We've got three options. We can recommend approval of the rezoning request based on the findings and facts as presented here today, from PUD to RMX to city commission. We can recommend denial to the request to the city commission. We can table the issue for additional information, and if we do recommend approval, we have the option of applying any conditions that we feel would be appropriate. Would anybody like to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezoning from PUD to RMX of 2018-06, REZ for 1100 North Second Street, with the condition that it also meets approval from the Historic Preservation Commission.
My second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm done.
Okay, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Unanimous? Anything else from the commissioners? Does the staff have anything for us? Is the staff have anything for us?
I will just note that for the August meeting, we will be keeping the original date of August 6th. We had previously said that we were going to move that back a week because I'd be out of town. My plans have changed, so I apologize for that, but yes, we'll be keeping the original date of August 6th.
At 6:00.
Okay, at 6:00.
Yeah, 6:00.
Six on the six.
Yes. Opposite reminders for myself.
We'll text you.
And we have no July meeting?
No July meeting.
All right, all right.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.
It's good to see everybody.